We'd like to invite you to join our League of Women Voters of Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. You'll find a very warm and interesting group of passionate women and men who are dedicated to defending our democracy and protecting our vote. So please go online at L V M, L M V, M E P H dot org for more information and to join. Thank you.
I'm Deb Brinkman, a member of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park and your moderator for the Eden Prairie School Board Candidate Forum. I would like to welcome our candidates and our viewers on behalf of our host, the League of Women Voters Chapter of Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, Hopkins. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time and setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. Tonight's questions have been submitted by the public online in advance. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or are of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. Questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. The special election for Eden Prairie School Board with one open seat will take place on Tuesday, November 2, with early voting which started on September 17. Voters can cast their ballots from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., weekdays until November 2, at the Administrative Services Center, 8100 School Road. On November 2, there's no party, excuse me, on November 2, there is no party designation for this office. I will now introduce the candidates for our forum of the Eden Prairie School Board. Daryl Stanton, Francesca Paganoumar, Steve Bartz, Michelle Madison, and Albert Born. All candidates were invited to this candidate forum. Albert Born is not here this evening. This one-hour candidate forum will begin with a 90-second opening statement. Following that, the candidates will respond to the questions which were submitted in advance by the voters. A timekeeper in the front row will hold up time cards when you have 15 seconds remaining. She will then hold up a stop sign. Each candidate will be called on to answer every question. I will alternate who goes first with every question. Our forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. So we'll begin with the yes/no questions. Excuse me, we will begin with the opening remarks. Daryl Stanton, would you like to go first?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for promoting democracy. I also like to thank all of my public school teachers because without them I wouldn't be sitting here today, and I think a lot of us could say that. Just a little bit about myself, I truly believe if we work together, there's nothing we cannot solve as it pertains to our students and children in our community. A little bit about myself, I've lived in Eden Prairie for 26 lovely years and have a wife that I love immensely, as well as my son, who I love immensely. We have a fur puppy named Harry, and he's a golden doodle. I started off here in the great state of Minnesota, receiving my education in Marshall, Minnesota. I've got a double major with honors, business administration management, and sociology. I've worked in the area of high education as it pertains to enrollment management, as well as retention. I believe that we can work together and solve the issues of our day. One thing that I know for certain, our students, some have fallen behind due to this pandemic. I would like to see us come together and work on a catch-up plan for our students. It's needed very much, and I think together we can make that happen. Thank you very much, and I'll pass the mic.
Thank you, Daryl. Francesca Paganoumar.
Hi, my name is Francesca Paganoumar. I've been married for 18 years to my amazing husband Mohammed, and we have three great kids, all in Eden Prairie Public Schools, ranging from preschool to high school, and my family's lived in Eden Prairie for four school years. I'm a teacher by profession. I began teaching in 1998 in one of the toughest districts in the country, the New York City Public Schools. I've taught in general ed, special ed, science, literacy, and I've been an early childhood educator. I want to bring my knowledge and experience to benefit our students, staff, and community. As an educator, I want every student to have opportunities to thrive, and as a classroom teacher, I want to support our teachers' needs so they can be the very best educators that they can be. Ensuring every student thrives means implementing best practices that have been found to be effective in districts like ours. Bringing everyone to the table means including the voices of our vibrant and diverse community in decision-making and problem-solving. And commitment to service is demonstrated by the years I've spent as a cadet in the Army ROTC and as a Girl Scout troop leader, volunteering in our schools here in Eden Prairie and in our community. It is essential we have board members who are committed to serving the needs of students, teachers, and community members. After the past 18 months, our kids deserve a stable and safe school year. For all of these reasons, I'm running for the school board, and I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you, Francesca. Steve Bartz.
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting tonight's event, and Deb for moderating. My name is Steve Bartz, and Eden Prairie has been my home for 17 years. My wife Tracy of 20 years, and I have been blessed with three kids. Our son is a 2021 graduate of Eden Prairie High School and is now attending the University of Nebraska in Lincoln. My two daughters are juniors at Eden Prairie High School. For the last 17 years, I have been actively involved in Eden Prairie Schools and the community. I have served our schools as a parent volunteer in numerous ways, and most recently as a speaker in the high school careers class. I was a longtime coach for a variety of my kids' sports teams, and I'm active at Grace Church, having served in youth ministries, community outreach events, and as a Sunday School teacher and a men's Bible study leader. I have a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Midstate University and a Master of Science in Nurse Anesthesia from the Minneapolis School of Anesthesia. I'm a certified registered nurse anesthetist with 25 years of healthcare experience in the areas of critical care and anesthesia. I'm running for the Eden Prairie School Board because I care about the success of our students, yours and mine. We must continue our pursuit of academic excellence by focusing first on our students and leveraging our resources well, so every student has opportunities to learn, grow, and be prepared for their best future. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle Madison.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. My name is Michelle Madison. I am a social worker from Detroit, Michigan. I have lived in Eden Prairie for approximately five years. I have a two-year-old, a four-year-old, and a six-year-old, all enrolled in Eden Prairie School Districts. Two of my children have autism, so I'm a part of their special education services as well. My professional background includes being a social worker for children with severe emotional disturbances. I teach them skills to overcome some of the symptoms that interfere with their functionality. And I'm also a supervisor for case managers that are assisting people with severe and persistent mental illnesses. So most of my professional life has been built on the mental health realm. However, my educational background, I have a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of Michigan, have a master's of social work degree with a specialty in interpersonal practice, essentially meaning that I'm a clinical therapist, also from the University of Michigan, and I'm currently completing my master's of business administration from the University of Michigan Dearborn. I hope to bring to the school board my expertise, my ability to navigate a system that can sometimes be difficult, and help our children when they fall beneath the cracks and in the cracks and gaps of our achievement gap in our school system. I hope that you are, that you will be open enough to hear what I have to say on different issues and the confidence in my leadership for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, now we will begin with our yes/no questions. We have five questions. Please answer yes or no to each question. We'll continue in the same order that we did the opening remarks, and then you will have two minutes to do any clarifications following the yes, the five yes/no questions. The first one, would you support to establish a written standard policy that contains multiple scenarios for filling future vacant school board seats? Daryl?
Yes.
And Francesca?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you. The second question, do you support mask mandates in public schools? Daryl?
Yes, if needed.
Francesca?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Number three, for those students and staff who are eligible, do you support vaccination mandates within our public schools? Daryl?
Yes, if needed.
Francesca?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Michelle?
No.
Thank you. The next question, do you believe there is a moral responsibility to review how racism has impacted our history within the curricula? Daryl?
Yes.
Francesca?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And the last yes-and-no question, do you believe the curricula should include civics instruction? Daryl?
Yes.
Francesca?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you. Now you will have two minutes to clarify any and all of the yes/no questions that we asked, and we will change the order for this question, and we'll start with Steve Bartz.
So this is a complicated issue, and I think the main concern is that our schools stay flexible in regards to mask mandates. I am a healthcare worker. I wear a mask every single day, eight to 24 hours a day. I don't like wearing masks, but I wear them for the protection of others. I think the main priority here with this mask mandate is that we keep our students and our staff healthy and safe and engaged in our classrooms, and that should be our top priority. Recent polling has been done in the, by this Morris Leatherman Group, which stated that was a big deal to our families, that being in school and socializing is very important for our kids. Through the pandemic, I think our district has been a leader in the number of in-school days we've had, maybe the, maybe the top school in the state if I'm not mistaken, and we have some of the lowest quarantine days in the state as well. So obviously, what the current state is doing, or the, or the school board and the administration is doing, is working and it's effective. Finally, I would say regarding the mask mandate, I agree with students not being masked that are over the grade of six. I think this is intentional because K through six students are not eligible for a vaccine if they so choose, and I think our schools are doing a good job with that. And as much as I hate to see our kids, little kids, being masked, and I've heard lots of parents talking to me about this, just to see their, their happy faces and to be involved with their teachers, I'm just, I'm just hoping in the, in the future here, as numbers go down, we can eliminate this mask mandate altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and we'll go to Daryl Stanton.
I concur with Steve regarding mask mandates. I think it's extremely important to follow the science pertaining to this matter because this pandemic is still mutating, and so we don't know what's coming forth in this situation. So we need to look at ways to continue to support our educational environment. We need to find ways to make it not a bad thing to actually wear a mask and social distance as it pertains to our students in civics. Well, you can just look around the country and find all this misguided information as it pertains to our democracy, and I think it's extremely important that students be taught civics or reintroduce it into the educational system, because I know when I was young, we had it, and it helped me out. I'm running for office right now, so I know how to participate in democracy, and I think it's extremely important that we, as citizens, know about democracy, know how to acquire information to make proper decisions, if you will, pertaining to our society. I think as we move forward, hopefully we'll continue to get proper information regarding this pandemic, and I know I'm jumping here, but I think it's important to have mask-wearing, social distancing in our, in our, in our schools. And I apologize for the rambling, I'm dealing with vertigo as well as seasonal allergies, so I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl, and we'll go to Francesca.
So when it comes to mandates, the question I like to ask is, what's the fastest, most effective way to get students and teachers together for learning without an outbreak that causes school closures? We all want schools to stay open and kids, staff, and teachers to stay safe, and health experts around the world say that vaccination is the strongest tool in our arsenal against COVID-19. From the perspective of choice, there are some who are too young to choose that, but there are also people who are old enough but can't because of underlying health conditions or certain types of things that go on with them, either cancer treatment and so forth, and they cannot be vaccinated either. And so for them, masking is the next best thing, and masking works best when everybody does it. I sympathize with kids who miss out on seeing their friends' expressions and, and their faces, because I understand as an educator how important that is for their social and emotional connection. But this is what we do here in Eden Prairie to show our care for our community by wearing a piece of cloth that protects us, our neighbors, and their families. In regard to teaching about racism in schools, think about it. How do we teach kids about the experiences of others of different races, religions, and backgrounds? We all want our kids to be happy and safe, and we do that when we honor the narratives and experiences of others. Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca, and Michelle.
Absolutely, thank you. So I would like to clarify my response to the mask mandate. I do agree with most of my candidates on what they're saying about requiring folks to wear a mask. My concern when we do not require everyone to wear a mask is that we have children in mixed households, some who are maybe kindergartners and with a high school are in their house, so there is a chance for cross-contamination. So that is my reason why saying that everyone in the school district should be masked. To provide further clarification on why I am opposed to forcing everyone to get vaccinated in terms of our children in our school, I believe that that decision should be reliable, left on the choice and decision of the parents. So what we should do, in my opinion, is to provide further psychoeducation and information to our parents so that they can make the healthiest decision for their child. I do not believe that we should mandate that for the children. In terms of the racial training, most of my career has been, aside from mental health supports, has been focused on racial equity, and that is something that has to be very intentionally discussed. So it isn't just the what, it's the who, the where, the why, the when, and it's also explaining what is the benefit and what is the hopeful impact. Anytime we are at a division, we need to be, remain, we need to remain focused on the end goal, and the end goal is preparing our children for successful performances in the 21st century. Understanding racism and how it impacts our peers and how we play a role in it is very crucial, and that's all I would like to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, and Michelle, we'll start with you for this next question.
Sure, I'll leave my mask on.
And we are going to go down to one minute now for the answers for this next set of questions, or for the, yeah, for the remainder. And what local Eden Prairie commissions or volunteer organizations have you been a member or leader of in the last five years?
Sandcastles Grief Support Program. I initially started my service with them in Detroit. They also have a location here. I believe that there's another organization that purchased or acquired that, or acquired Sandcastles as a group, so it's no longer called Sandcastles. Sandcastles is a grief support program for children who have experienced an immediate loss. I served as a group facilitator. Having personally lost my parents when I was eight and 11, I provided not just my personal story and narrative, but also from a social work lens, ways to process grief, ways to understand how to heal from it, and also strategies on how to talk to children about death and grief.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Francesca.
I have volunteered at my children's schools. I've volunteered in one of my son's art classes. I was there every day that they were there assisting with other students. I'm the president-elect, the vice president-elect of our middle school PTO, and I'm one of the co-founders of a not-for-profit called Inspire Community, which seeks to bring together our diverse and vibrant community here in the South Metro. And this summer, we organized an event that I ran called Storytime and Play, where we got kids together in Eden Prairie playgrounds, and we were just talking and playing around literacy. And during the winter, for elementary and middle school students, I ran a virtual book club for them to keep them engaged in learning in a fun way during the pandemic.
Thank you, Francesca, and we'll go to Daryl.
I've had the pleasure of serving on committee, for example, the Curriculum Advisory Committee. I've served on the Strategic Planning Committee, but one that I'm currently serving on is the World's Best Workforce Committee. The World Best Workforce was developed by Minnesota State statute and school districts, charter schools in Minnesota. One thing that we focus on, we're trying to achieve, is to ensure that all children are ready for school. All third graders can read at grade level. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for a career in college, and all students graduate from high school. I'm proud of that work there, but also I've been involved in volunteering for our schools in, as a youth coach for our students, as well as working on, continue working on the World's Best Workforce Committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Daryl, and Steve.
So I've been a volunteer in many ways in our kids' schools. Most recently, I'd say in the last five years, been on multiple field trips as a chaperone in, with our schools. I've also taken part, as I mentioned earlier, in the Eden Prairie High School Careers Class. I think that's a great way to get kids excited about future endeavors and get their wheels turning about what kind of job opportunities are there. And I've also been a coach for several years as well, coaching mainly basketball now in the last five years, which has been a lot of fun. And then finally, just my activity in the community and my church, having served in some outreach programs that have definitely affected, directly affected our schools. I've done work there, and as a Bible study leader in, in the church as well, so thanks.
Thank you, Steve. We'll start with you for this next question. Please name the people or organizations within Eden Prairie who have endorsed your campaign.
So I have not sought any endorsements for this election. I think it is important to clarify that. I believe politics should not be involved in our schools and this election. This is a nonpartisan election, and I know there are candidates here that have sought endorsements. I don't agree with that, and I just, I just feel that the best way to go here is making sure that our students are first, not the partisan politics of our community.
Thank you, Steve, and we'll go to Daryl.
I concur with Steve. I haven't sought any endorsements from any politician, because I believe a nonpartisan race should be just that, you should approach with your own ideas, and people in our community will make that judgment based on what you present and bring to the table. So at this point, I have not and will not seek endorsements from any political candidate whatsoever. So I'll move forward on our own for the people of our district and our children in our district. So it will be without an endorsement from any politician. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl, and we will go to Michelle Madison.
Sure.
I do hold endorsements. I would have to disagree with our fellow candidate, Steve Bartz. Not all endorsements are political. Some of them are very much organizational-based. The two organizations that I am endorsed by are the Eden Prairie Educational Association and the Eden Prairie Preschool Educational Association, as well as Outfront Minnesota, which is an organization that focuses on providing interventional supports for children who identify as L B T Q I A.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And Francesca.
Thank you. Well, living here in Eden Prairie, we're very fortunate that we have an amazing group of local leaders leading our community through this pandemic and every other challenge that we've ever faced, and so I'm very grateful to be endorsed by quite a few of them. It's been a great honor, and it's very humbling to me that such outstanding leaders would endorse me. Among them are city council member P.G. Narainan, our mayor, Ron Case, our state representative for 19B, Carley Cotisa-Withhun, and our state senator, Steve Swedzinski. Ron and Steve were both educators in Eden Prairie for a very long time. Steve particularly was a very beloved teacher in our high school, and Ron taught in our elementary schools, so it really means a lot to me to know that they endorsed me. And state rep Carley Cotisa-Withhun sits on a couple of boards related to children and education, so of course the endorsement from her means a lot to me.
Thank you, Francesca. Francesca, we'll start with you for this next question. What programs would you champion to acknowledge not all post-graduates are college-bound?
Would you just repeat that?
Yes. What programs would you champion to acknowledge not all post-graduates are college-bound?
Well, one thing we have in place right now in Eden Prairie for our high school is that our graduation requirements are not limited to that which would only qualify a student for college. So you could graduate from Eden Prairie High School and not have to meet all of the requirements for some of our local colleges. And this is for students who are going to set themselves up to attend trade school. I think that having the access to opportunities outside of college are essential for our students. I think it's important for them to have opportunities to pursue the things that they want to do, the jobs and career fields that make them happy as individuals. I would also like to add, I forgot to mention that I was also endorsed by Veronica Stoltz, who was a former board member.
Thank you, Francesca. Michelle?
Thank you for the question. I would say that the main thing to champion in that regard would be assessing what are the most strongest career fields that do not require a collegiate education, and then implementing that from a vocational standpoint. So what are the certificate programs that we can provide for our students so that they can go out into the world post-graduation and actually succeed? Some of that would include doing an assessment on what are the, what are the professions now and projected in 10 years to actually perform very well, thank you, without, without needing a college education. So championing that and making sure that we have the strong infrastructure that will direct our, direct our children in that direction, should they choose not to go to college.
Thank you, Michelle. Steve?
Yeah, I think we should be, as a school district and, and board, looking for opportunities within Eden Prairie and partnering with local businesses that would support this idea. We've got a thriving business community in Eden Prairie, and something that was rolled out in, in the meeting with Dr. Swanson when we were meeting him and he getting to know the candidates, he had some very exciting plans regarding capstone projects for our students, and I think this would be a great way for just pairing up the interests and the talent. the interests and the talents of these students in a way to meet a community need. And it would benefit both parties, both as the student in the capstone project and the businesses as well. So, I think that's where I would start.
Thank you, Steve. And Daryl.
Well, right now, we, excuse me. I would champion certificates in specific areas. For example, the wave of the future is technology. And I do believe that we can incorporate into our school system, Eden Prairie Public Schools, and particularly the high school, certificates in various computer technology. So, they can walk out the door upon graduation. They don't have to go to a four-year or two-year institution and be prepared to get a job, a high-paying job, a livable wage job immediately. Also, we can do certificates in various areas. Think, brother Steve, you're in nursing. So, we could get certificates, not necessarily two-year, but could field you into the nursing program with a nursing certificate upon graduation from Eden Prairie High School. In some cases, you will gain, will get high-paying, livable-wage jobs. So, I think certificate options are very important to maybe the success for students who do not want to go the traditional route of a two-year or four-year institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. And we'll start with you with this next question. Please name the people or organizations outside of Eden Prairie who have donated to your campaign.
Well, that's easy because I've sought no donations from anyone. Again, I did not want to have that political influence. Again, this is a nonpartisan race. So, I have not sought any donations. And I'm not rich by any means. And so, from that standpoint, I have not and will not seek political donations from any entity or person. Period.
Thank you, Daryl. Michelle.
Absolutely. So, the folks who have donated to my campaign are folks that either personally know me or are affiliated with me through my sorority. I'm a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and we are very much involved in politics and anything that involves our community. So, I made an announcement to them, and some of them did donate to my campaign. But most of my campaign donations have been from people who personally know me or have either interfaced with some of the work that I've done professionally.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yes.
And Steve.
Could you repeat the question, just a little?
Yes.
With the outside the community piece?
Please name the people or organizations outside of Eden Prairie who have donated to your campaign.
All of my donations have come from residents of Eden Prairie, other than two. One being my best friend since college, and the second being a dad in the district. He moved out of the district, lives in Minnetoka, still has kids in Eden Prairie schools.
Thank you, Steve. And Francesca.
I've been very blessed and fortunate that many people in Eden Prairie have graciously decided to support, either by making a donation or helping in some other way. None of my donations have come from outside of Eden Prairie. This campaign is very much a community effort. I have a great team, and among them are every resident in the community who in some way, shape, or form has contributed.
Thank you, Francesca. We'll start with you for this next question. What do you believe is the most important issue facing Eden Prairie schools?
Right now, I think it would be the pandemic because of its potential to cause so many people to become very seriously ill and so many people to die or to have consequences that can change the trajectory of their lives for some time to come. And last year, our district did a phenomenal job of handling the pandemic. We followed the guidance of the Minnesota Departments of Education and Health, and we had in place really great mitigation strategies. And last year, we had one of the highest number of days in school because of how well our district did with the guidance of our superintendent. So, I would encourage our district to continue adhering to guidance from the Departments of Health and Education and continue the mitigation strategies that made us so successful and stink safe last year.
Thank you, Francesca. And we'll go to Steve.
I think I'd agree with Francesca that being safe, healthy, and in school is the number-one priority for our kids. Again, referring back to some of those numbers that I cited earlier. The community was very clear, their voice was clear in that our schools need to be flexible in regard to the pandemic. And parents overwhelmingly agreed that our kids learn best when they're in school. And I think most of us would agree on that. And in saying that, when our kids are in school and socializing and active, we can focus our work on keeping our students first and continuing our efforts towards their success.
Thank you, Steve. And we'll go to Daryl.
A couple of issues. One would be mental health. I think that's the underlying problem that has not been fully addressed. And I think the school district could help out with that by providing, as you go onto the web portal, immediate resources that can be pulled together that could help our students, teachers, and overall school community. So, mental health stress would be one of those issues. Also, again, I mentioned earlier about kids falling behind in this situation. We have to come together and address that because once you fall behind, it's hard to catch up. So, we need to have a catch-up plan that will be, that will focus on high dosage tutoring to get these kids up to snuff and to help them be successful and to continue to inspire them to reach their highest goals in life.
Thank you, Daryl. And Michelle.
Yes, thank you. I would agree with everything that's been said. However, my approach is always to seek out where are the gaps. We do live in a very strong performing school district. We're very blessed to be a part of this district. However, there are some racial equity disparities that exist. And if we do not talk about them in a healthy way, then our children will continue to follow the cycle. That is, for me, the biggest issue that we are facing right now. The ability, the lack of tools, weaponizing certain terms and not even understanding what they mean, and not even preparing our children to have the discussion that they are going to need to have at some point in time in their either present life or adult life. So, I would say that that would be the biggest issue for me and what I see in terms of what are the gaps and how do we support our teachers? And how do we support our faculty members in actually having those discussions around race? It's a difficult conversation. It's meant to be difficult. However, that is the most pressing issue that we need to provide the supports for.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And Steve, we'll start with you for this next question. Please provide specific examples of how you will use your position on the board to improve inequality specifically in these areas: gender, race, religion, ability, and LGBTQ+.
So, I think first, I think our schools are doing a good job at including each child. I think we have done a good job in terms of, when we talk about race and achievement gap disparities, we're doing good work in that area. We are closing that gap. And as it appears, we should be reaching those goals by the 2023 deadline with the strategic plan. In terms of race and, I'm sorry, in terms of gender and LGBTQ and ethnicity and religion, I think we need to keep things really simple here. And that is, we need to be open and have understand, open, be open, understanding, and just have conversations and learn from our differences, celebrate those differences, and work together to just create a community within our school.
Thank you, Steve. And Francesca.
Well, when it comes to issues of gender, race, religion, ability, LGBTQ+ I believe that diversity is our superpower. When people from different backgrounds come together, problem-solving benefits from their unique perspective. We benefit from diversity of thought, and this improves decision-making by ensuring the needs of the whole community are included. It allows for suggestions and solutions that might not have otherwise been thought of. Our student body is 47.2% non-white. So, it makes sense for our school board to have highly qualified board members that reflect this diversity. And it also makes sense for the diversity of our school board to also reflect the other diversities of our student body and our community.
Thank you, Francesca. Daryl.
Most of my professional career has been in the multicultural services arena. And one thing that I think is extremely important is to bring folks together in various communities. So, if I'm a Native American, if I'm African-American, or if I'm gay, we can get together and have conversations about what does it mean to be that? What does it mean to have understanding for your fellow man and woman? So, from that standpoint, I would want to enhance the situation by working with all the communities. We can have open discussions, particularly in the schools. Having performed that type of diversity work in, at the collegiate level, I think that could be replicated in a public school here in Eden Prairie. But we have a great system, we have a lot of diversity, and I embrace it all.
Thank you, Daryl. And Michelle.
Absolutely, thank you. So, when we talk about diversity, we have to be very cognizant that diversity is just the aesthetic of what things look like and who sits at the table. It's about what are our inclusion strategies to make sure that those people feel safe and brave enough to actually participate in the conversations that happen at that table? So, as a school board director, when I consider those categories, that means that for, when we think of gender, gender is expanding. It's very fluid for many people. So, making sure that we are educating our educators about the difference in pronouns. And when we're talking about the LGBTQIA+ community, understanding the disparities that face that community and providing an inclusion strategy so that they feel included in our school processes. That is a population that has almost the highest suicide rate. So, making sure that we are addressing those disparities in an inclusive manner, for me, is incredibly important. In terms of race, the same thing. It's all about inclusion and the strategies and the tactical paradigms that we're going to actually sit down and talk about to make sure that those folks feel included. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And we'll start with you for this next question.
Sure.
What is your experience within multicultural organizations that demonstrate that you are capable of leadership on the Eden Prairie School Board?
Okay. So, I'll start from most recent and go backwards. I own a small business entitled The Humanity Collection. And most of the work that I do there is I partner with individuals and organizations. I teach allyship trainings, and I educate their peers on how to have those difficult conversations with those simple strategies. When I was in my master's program for social work, I was the president of our student union, and I led most of the task force that involved assessing the curriculums, assessing the curriculums to make sure that people, to assess and make sure that people, our students in the classroom felt included, and they felt not triggered by some of the material that was taught. Moving backward from there, I've always served on additional committees, whether it be in my workforce, my volunteer organizations, that specifically address the paradigms of how to discuss and resolve racial disparities or things of that nature.
Thank you, Michelle. And Francesca.
Well, to start, my family is a very ethnically diverse organization. But all of the organizations I've worked with were extremely diverse, from New York City Public Schools to my time in the Reserve Officer Training Corps to the time I've spent here with Inspire Community and other organizations. I basically have spent the last 20 years of my life preparing for this role, whether it be my experiences as a parent or as a teacher, whether it was at the Wilder Foundation where I did a program there about leadership and diversity. So, I think that I'm prepared for the rigors and challenges of the diversity that Eden Prairie presents and the rigors and challenges of our school board.
Thank you, Francesca. And Steve.
So, I'd say my main experience in multicultural organizations is just working in healthcare for 25 years. Over those years, I have had the opportunity to take care of lots of different people from lots of different places, cultures, ethnicities, and furthermore, just working with a very diverse workforce and work team. So, I've felt that's just been a great opportunity for me, and it's a great way for me to have conversations with folks and learn about differences and how I can grow. Secondly, I would just say in our schools, I've been a coach for a long time here, and there's nothing better than seeing kids from all different backgrounds unifying to just play in a team and have fun where they're not thinking about anything else, probably the best part of their day. And then finally, just doing community in our church and just interacting with lots of different people from all walks alike.
Thank you, Steve. And Daryl.
I actually started in multiculturalism. That's where I started, and it was at my alma mater. We had a situation where we had a rotating door as it pertained to students of color. And I started to say, something's got to change here. So, what I did, I organized on campus. I started working with students, set up networks between professors and services on campus. And eventually, that morphed into being the multicultural coordinator at Southwest State University. And I'm proud of that work because the entity today still exists on the campus and is doing good things for students of color and diversity on campus. That then transitioned to being director of multicultural missions at Hamlin University. And again, bringing people together for one mission, the students, students of color, that made Hamlin University one of the best universities, College de la Brice, in the region.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
Steve, we'll start with you with this next question. Please explain why you agree or disagree with this statement: "The school board should be gender and racially balanced with people who have or are recently had children in the school district."
So, I think at the end of the day, it may be hard to have equal representation just with gender. I do think it's very important. It's just a matter of who the candidates are and who is running. And so, I do believe that we should have equal representation. I think it's in our best interests. What was the last part of that question? I'm sorry.
Please explain why you agree or disagree with this statement: "The school board should be gender and racially balanced with people who have or recently had children in the school district."
Okay. And as far as kids, I think it is definitely advantage for board members to have children that are in the district. I think we have a better understanding of how our schools are functioning, how they operate. We actually know the teachers by name. We're attending conferences. And I just think it serves our board well to understand our school system, our district, our goals, our values, and how that relates to our students and what's best for them.
Thank you, Steve. And Daryl.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Please explain why you agree or disagree with this statement: "The school board should be gender and racially balanced with people who have or recently had children in the school district."
Well, I think having diversity on your school board makes for better decisions for the students in that district. Having kids in the schools that you want to represent, I think, is extremely important. I can't tell you how many interactions I've had with teachers while I was volunteering in the classroom or doing special projects for teachers when I was volunteering to get all that information. I now have a better understanding of what the teachers do, and they do a magnificent job for our students in this district. So, I would say, yes, having someone in the school district helps. Kids in the school district, that is. And so, I guess I affirm that I support that particular question.
Thank you, Daryl. Francesca.
Well, I think it makes sense to have
Well, I think it makes sense to have a school board of highly qualified people who represent the diversity of our community, people who will keep kids first. Teachers and staff have worked so hard through the challenges of the last eighteen months, and they deserve a board that will support them and have gratitude for them. It's important that our board members value and protect public education, that they deeply understand the learning needs of our children, which is one of the things that being a parent can help you to do. And they should understand the support students as well as teachers need, which is one of the advantages of having someone on the board who is both a parent and a teacher. And they should protect the shared values of our community and protect the children of our community.
Thank you Francesca. And Michelle.
Thank you. I agree with the statement. I think that having familiarity and having a stake in it also keeps you engaged and keeps your interest invested in the outcome of not only the students but the staff members. That means that you interface with the folks who drive your children to school, should they ride the bus. It means that you talk to the paraprofessionals of your students that maybe are seeing things that you're not able to see in the school, as well as the teachers who lead the classroom, as well as the janitors, as well as the lunch folks who provide food for our children. So yes, I think that is very important, that we have a racial and a general, a gender balance on the school board, especially with kids, with parents who have children in the district.
Thank you, Michelle. And we'll start with you with this next question. What policies or initiatives would you support to make the current school board more transparent to the public?
That's a great question. So transparency is another word that sometimes can be weaponized. So I'm going to start by operationalizing what that should mean. Transparency, in my opinion, should mean that we're going to discuss the policies, we're going to discuss the procedures, and we're going to outline them so the public has access to what we're doing and why we are making decisions. Obviously, being on a board and participating in difficult trajectories or difficult conversations about those things, everything can't be publicized immediately. However, there should be a process that at least allows folks to have understanding of what strategies the board members are following to come to decisions, what type of input or what type of stakeholders are we consulting with to make sure that they're involved in that process. In terms of transparency in general and how people get into the school board, I think that there should be some clear guidelines on how all of our processes should be communicated to the public.
Thank you, Michelle. And Francesca.
Our school board currently has a lot of things in place to increase transparency and accountability and to also include community involvement. The working sessions, as well as the meetings, are open for the public to attend, and there's also a time for public comments at the beginning, which I think is essential, to have the voice of our community members be involved. What I think our board could do better is more transparency in decision making, such as when they appoint people and why, and having consistency in how they do those things, so that our community could in good faith trust them to be making decisions that put the learning of our children first and not people's political agendas.
Thank you Francesca. And Steve.
I think one of the main things the school board could be tasked with doing is just providing the public with a better understanding of exactly what their role is in the district and what, what they, what they can even do. I've been a little frustrated at times, I have to say, just being out rubbing shoulders with people. Either they just not super interested in hearing about the school board issues, or they may not really even really know much about what the school board does. So I think it's important for, for us to just explain, just do a little better job of explaining things to the community. And then I would also say, just being involved, being visible, having community visibility. I know there's work being done on the board with some community linkage committees to just enhance that visibility, and then just to better describe the goals of the board. They're called "ends," I think that's confusing. I think our community would benefit from that.
Thank you, Steve. And Daryl.
Well, having campaigned for this position, there's a lot of things people don't understand what the school board actually does. And I think maybe, just maybe, they can do a roadshow when they're considering certain policies or initiatives. They can get out and outreach to the community, not just on a website, but actually literally get there and meet people, have real conversations. And I don't mean today we're meeting at the city hall at eight o'clock from nine o'clock, I mean actually go to where our people are. So that may mean a park during a special occasion or whatever the case may be, but they can travel around this beautiful city and do a roadshow to articulate what they're actually doing. And so transparent from that standpoint, I think that actually would actually help people get a better understanding, not fully, but a better understanding of what the school board actually does.
Thank you, Daryl. And we'll start with you with this next question. Do you believe that restorative practices can impact school communities to resolve conflicts?
Having dealt with bullying, for example, restorative conflicts, I think it can be, but it can't be the only thing, because sometimes things that happen in the school need to be dealt with more effectively. And I think the school district needs to have a plan of bringing parent to parent when conflict occurs with our children. I think they could do a better job, in some cases, dealing with bullying, which is a pandemic. I just talked to a parent during campaign whose child was bullied, and I think restorative measures can be helpful, depending how it's weeded out and if both sides feel they have an equal shot of getting justice. And so from that standpoint, I would encourage restorative practice to help along the way, but we must, let time stop.
Thank you, Daryl. Michelle.
I absolutely support restorative practices. As a social worker, we are always taught the idea of rupture and repair when it comes to human relationship, and that is not just within the school realm, that's within all realms. As each of our children go through different stages of development, there will be certain opportunities for them to choose to grow or choose to be stagnant. And if we have restorative practices that are implemented so that they can understand healthy conflict, not all conflict is bad, some conflict is necessary for growth. However, when we think about restorative practices, when we do cause harm, how are we teaching our children to undo that harm or to go back and apologize and restore that friendship or restore just the human dignity that should be present regardless of age range? Oh, sorry. So I do support restorative practices because rupture and repair is very natural and normal in all human relationships and should be there.
Thank you, Michelle. And Steve.
Yeah, I think I would agree with the comments that have already been made. In regard to bullying, it has devastating effects. I think our, one, one thing that really has been important to me as I've thought about this campaign is how important our school is as a community to our kids. This is where our kids are learning how to do life with their peers. I think these restorative proactive measures are important, and I also feel like we can't let things slide through the cracks by just going through an algorithm or a bullet point check system. This is how our kids are going to learn how to resolve conflicts, and part of our goal as a school is to have our kids be ready for the 21st century and interacting in a, in, in the workforce. So it is important, and I think seeing it through the lens of community and how we can work together is the best method.
Thank you, Steve. And Francesca.
So I'm very pleasantly surprised with this question because I completed several mediation training programs, and I was a mediator in general in family mediation. And during my time there, what I learned is that a lot of what a mediator is doing is not just helping two people resolve a temporary conflict, but actually teaching them conflict resolution skills they can take with them for the rest of their lives. It's normal for humans to have conflict, we're unique people, we're going to disagree with each other. But it's not normal to have divisions that pull communities apart. Right now, I think is a great time for our community to benefit from restorative justice practices. And like the motto of our city, "Live, Work, Dream," we want to keep Eden Prairie an amazing place to live, work, and dream. And doing that means that we have to learn how to resolve the conflicts we may have from time to time with our neighbors.
Thank you Francesca. And we'll start with you with this next question. The school board oversees one employee, the superintendent. What do you see as the school board's responsibility in this relationship?
Well, as the model of our board is currently, we have a governance model, and so Superintendent Swanson is the sole line of communication between the board and the district. So the relationship is that the board gives him directives of things that they would like for him to achieve, and then he utilizes the staff and resources of the district to try to achieve those things. And then the board during the monitoring season would monitor what has been done and then give him feedback about if he's achieved it or not. I think there could be some room for improvement by making more opportunities for our teachers and staff members to have more meaningful exchanges with our board, similar to what the board did this summer with the listening sessions where they invited other community members like parents. I would like to see things like that happen for our, our teachers and staff. I also think it would be great to do it for the people we provide our school district to the greatest benefit of, our students, especially our high school students, who I think could give us some pretty interesting feedback.
Thank you Francesca. Steve.
So our school board really is there to oversee the superintendent in his role. I think this is a very clean model of, of how to do that. Our community sets the standards and the values of our curriculum. I know we have a curriculum committee that does that, but I think our community voice is, is very loud in its expectations for the opportunities that are being provided to our students. I think I would also like to see a little more interaction somehow with these, with the teachers. Just being a parent myself, I do, really do believe it's, it's good to hear all sides of, of things when it comes to board governance and the superintendent, and right now, there's just not a way to do that.
Thank you, Steve. And Daryl.
Looking at the superintendent and, for example, the role of our teachers, our teachers are fantastical, if you will. And so they have a lot of great ideas of how to move things forward. I think the interaction with the superintendent and as you go down the pipeline to talk to teachers, to talk to, directly to counselors, to talk directly to administrators who are not necessarily the principal would be beneficial and move us along in regards to a better line of, of, of communication, if you will. And I apologize to the audience today and everyone else, Vertigo and it's just, it's not healthy today. So I apologize to everyone for my semi-rambling, if you will, but I, again, I apologize to the audience as well.
Thank you, Daryl. And Michelle.
So Dr. Swanson's role is essentially to interpret what we want to be implemented in the long stands. Anytime we're dealing with the barriers of communication, it has to be clearly communicated what we anticipate the outcome to look like and how we are planning to measure that so that he has a clear guidance from us on what we are expecting as a board for him to actually implement in policy and procedures in the change within the next ten years. I do think that there are some strong avenues that can improve it. However, I do think that the main thing to do is to communicate effectively, this is what we are hoping to see, these are the outcomes, and just how, right now, it's measured in the ends. It has to be clearly communicated on what this means in terms of when it gets interpreted, is it landing the way that it should land? Is it impacting our students the way that it should impact them? Is it benefiting our staff and faculty members and all stakeholders in the school district the way that it, it should be intended to? So just having that clear communication on outlining our impact or the out, the outcome of what policies we want.
Thank you, Michelle. And Steve, we'll start with you for this next question, and this is the last question. And then we'll have our one-minute closing remarks. So the question is, how would you address mental health in Eden Prairie schools, mental in, in Eden Prairie schools in light of the pandemic?
Well, this has been a very tough year for our students. I'm a dad of three kids, I saw it firsthand. Many, many parents, I think, were just trying to pry their children out of their bedroom to get, to get their work done in, in a formal setting like a table and a chair, for instance. But not to make light of the, the mental health thing, it hits home with me personally in our family, and these are real struggles. And I, I really firmly believe that our school has to do its best to support our kids, and we need to create a culture in our school from the top down that takes mental health seriously. It can have devastating effects, and it is just, in my opinion, one of, one of the most important things that we can be doing for our students right now. They should be able to talk freely about this and, and see it as another one of those things, being a part of a community and learning to deal with it together.
Thank you, Steve. And Francesca.
Mental health after pandemic life is something we've become increasingly aware of, but it's something that's always needed a little more attention than we've given it. I'm a busy mom, I have three kids in three different schools. Without a pandemic, I have to get them all ready and do three different drop-offs and three different pickups, help with homework and projects. During distance learning, I also had to manage my different age group kids navigating technology and the challenges of distance learning, and I got to see them every single day in front of me and see how they began to change. And I have pretty well-adjusted kids. Many of the children in our district don't just struggle because of the pandemic, they were already struggling before, and this has kind of pushed them over the edge. We have amazing resources in the state of Minnesota. We have the Washburn Clinic, which has a relationship with our school district already. We can't put every student on the limited school counselors that we have, but we can start to refer them out increasingly to places like Washburn and other places. But we also can help our parents because some of our students struggle because their families are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you Francesca. And Daryl.
It is rough. This pandemic has unleashed things that we never expected to, to face as a community and clearly as a school district. I believe we can do a, maybe a better job, not everyone can go to Washburn, not everybody can actually rely on the supports of school because it's just overwhelming. And so I would advocate for a collective information, fact-proven sites that kids, families can utilize, clearing through, a clearinghouse, if you will, and place it on our website to deal with mental health issues. I believe that if that happens, that will help along the process of kids and maybe even ridding ourselves of the stigma of talking about mental health. So from that standpoint, I think we can get resources on our website to help our families and help our children. That will be a start in conjunction with school counselors at school. Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. And Michelle.
So there's a couple of ways to approach mental health, especially after a pandemic. One, when we talk about mental health, we need to understand what are we talking about? Mental health from a high-level perspective is kind of broken down in three different ways, mood-based disorders, organic disorders, or environmental issues. So we have to assess, well, where do we start with what actually needs to be implemented? My first suggestion would be to increase the budget for our mental health supports. As a child social worker, I am in the field with these children, and I've been in the field, I was one of the first to go back into the field because some of the traumas that my children, my kiddos, go through are very intense. So doing everything through a screen, doing everything through distance did not work for their traumas. When we talk about mental health and we talk about how does it need to be received, we need to be talking about the concept of grief, not just from the concept of someone passing away and physically dying, but the sense of loss that everyone has encountered over the last almost two years. So that has to be included in the direction of how we talk about mental health, breaking that down and making sure the infrastructure is built up from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, now we will move to our closing remarks. You'll get one minute for, for the closing, and we're going to reverse the order in which we did the opening remarks. So Michelle, we'll start with you.
Absolutely. Thank you for tuning in. Absolutely. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you for hosting this event. Thank you to the wonderful candidates also for signing up for a very challenging role. I know that most of us have a very personal stake in Eden Prairie. We are all parents. We all have our hearts invested into not only our children, but the benefit to the children that we hope to one day serve. I ask for your confidence in my leadership. I ask for your vote on November 2nd. I will show up, and I will listen to the stakeholders and implement policies that are actually felt within the community.
Thank you, Michelle. Steve?
When looking at a place to move our young family in 2004, we were immediately attracted to Eden Prairie because of the strong schools and the reputation of academic excellence and the co-curricular opportunities that it provided. So 17 years later, now rooted in Eden Prairie, I fully appreciate how our community values and high regard for this academic excellence and achievement are woven into our schools. If elected, I will represent these values and work to uphold the high standards our community places on the educational opportunities it provides. I will also bring a perspective of mutual respect for all opinions and an open mind to the school board. Now up until November 2nd, I ask for your vote. Let's vote students first, uniting for the success and achievement of each student in Eden Prairie and making it a place where each student thrives and belongs.
Thank you, Steve. Francesca?
Thank you. Well, to sum it up, what I want everybody to think about when they're making the decision on who they vote for is the things they should know about me is that I am an educator with a background in general in special education. I was a classroom teacher, literacy teacher, science teacher, and an early childhood educator. I'm also a parent with children preschool through high school in our district. My daughter, she's my oldest. She's going to be the class of 2024. And my youngest son will be the class of 2035. So I'm vested in Eden Prairie for the long term. And keep in mind my commitment to service. It's demonstrated by the background of other organizations I've committed my time to. And I ask people to vote for me when they do turn out to vote in support that I will bring forward policies that allow each student opportunities to thrive, bring everyone to the table, and put the needs of our kids, staff, and community first.
Thank you, Francesca. And Daryl?
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and these wonderful candidates here tonight. I love and care about our community and schools and students. I truly believe that the citizens of Eden Prairie have more that unites us than divides us. And I want to bring my experience working in schools, volunteering in the schools, serving on the world's best workforce committee, and continue to work collaboratively with various parts of our community and schools. I think you have some wonderful choices here, and I hope that you consider me as a school board candidate and get your vote on November 2nd. Early voting is already started, so please get out, cash your votes, and participate in democracy. I think it's extremely important. And again, thank the League of Women Voters and these wonderful candidates here tonight.
Thank you, Daryl. Well, this concludes our candidate form for the Eden Prairie School Board's special election. Thank you to the city of Eden Prairie, the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the Eden Prairie School Board candidates. Please remember to make it a priority to go vote. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.